We can go ahead and start.
All right, we're calling meeting in order. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, ready for the roll date?
Mr. Venters?
Here.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Here.
Mrs. Dahl?
Here.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Here.
Mr. Spano?
Present.
All present at the count of four, sir, here for this evening.
Thank you. First, under committee reports, we do have a report from Russ Gilmore, our representative on the MV CTC board. This is as we are doing now, written report. I think anyone's got gotten that. When will we have him in person?
In October.
October, okay.
In October.
Okay.
And I had just one comment on that particular report, and I will make sure that I alert Mr. Gilmore. There is a young man's name, and it is Brandon Mifflin.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, he is, happens to be from Beppo, and so he, I think, just misunderstood.
Oh, I see.
That particular young man is involved in like that Air Force Base piece that's connected with the CTC, and I think he does like a two-week, whether it's apprenticeship or internship, and then, but that was just something that actually was some assistance from Mrs. Robbins. We were able to find out that that was a student outside our district that happens to be in this report. So that would be just one correction that we would help him with.
Sure. Okay.
Any other questions or concerns?
No, good report as always. He's very detailed.
Yes, he is.
Okay. We'll move on then to the superintendent and assistant superintendents' reports.
All right. Well, I'll step in right away, and we're going to talk about personnel. So later in our agenda, we have several new staff members that will be remancomending to the board for approval, and we're excited to have them. So they are here this evening, and so I'm going to let them kind of stand and tell you just a little bit about themselves and what role that they'll be fulfilling.
Sure.
Ladies first, right? Our, our, so you're, we'll get to your art.
I know, I thought you were pointing.
I was pointing in that way, and I should have given the name, so yes.
He's excited.
Well, he is, he's in the back.
Yes.
Okay. My name's Melissa May. I graduated from Wright State University with my bachelor's and my master's degree in education. I was fortunate enough to do my year-long student teaching at the middle school here in Tip City, where I just really fell in love with this community, and I applied for the fourth grade math and science position at LT Ball. And here with me today is my husband Jacob.
Thank you, Melissa. All right, keep, we'll just go down the line. Hunter?
My name's Hunter Folkertsma. I'm the offensive line coach here at the high school. I went to Bowling Green State University, played football there, and I'll be a special at eight at the high school.
Hi, I'm Katie Sullivan. I'm going to be the EMIS coordinator. I'm currently EMIS coordinator. I've worked in the district for about thirteen years. I live in Detroit, have three children. Very excited about this adventure, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Harper. I have my bachelor's and master's degrees from Wright State University. I majored in middle childhood education. I completed my student teaching at West Carrollton in an eighth-year classroom. I'm very excited to be here for this position today.
Steve Aroff. Most of you know who I am. We're going to be transitioning to the assistant superintendent role. I'm very excited about this, this change. I've served the district as a teacher, as an assistant principal, as high school principal, and now transitioning to this role where I will be able to help advance academic achievement for all of our students and help with our staff and really work to develop the whole child. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, honor.
Oh, my turn now? Hi, my name's Art Chen. Been living in Tip City since ninety-one. I had business here for over twenty-five years. Most of you know me. Recently retired, sold the restaurant, and I have an opportunity to be the cafeteria manager at Broadway. And two things I'll tell you I'll do is I'll try to run the cafeteria as a business and treat all those kids just like they were paying twenty-five dollars a meal. And it's a, it's an opportunity for me.
She's going for her baked beans. The baked bean recipe, the same. Don't use the baked bean recipe. Get it from Judy.
All right, I'm good.
Best in the district.
All right, well, thank you all very much for being here, and if you have the plans for this evening, you may be dismissed at this time. It will be voted on later, but thank you. It's great for our board to have a face with the name. All right, so we're ready for the second item, which happens to be our second semester bullying report, and that has been sent out in the Friday board update with a little bit of information, but that's something standard that we do on semester-by-semester basis, and then that is posted on our website. Out of this particular grouping, I was going over that with more detail, and I believe there is one of those that had actually been on the tip line. Other than that, these were things that occurred within the school day or had been brought to the principal's attention outside of the tip line.
And just because something is reported on the tip line doesn't necessarily mean it will rise to even the on-line.
I have a question. When this first came up, we talked about the different companies. I mean, you know how passionate I am about this.
Sure.
And I've never really cared for anonymous alerts, because all of the information is handled here. And to me, it would be a lot more effective if the information was handled by a third party, because I think the whole anonymity thing can kind of, if it's still handled in-house, a lot of people think, you know, how anonymous am I really? So that's something that we talked about at the very beginning, and I think that contract is up, I must say, October with the anonymous alerts.
It probably is in fall, yes.
And we've discussed looking at the option of having the information housed outside of Tip City. And I don't know if that's still an option. Mr. Harrow, hey, first thing on your plate, here you go.
It's something we certainly can look at. When I think about it, I mean, as far as what I call resolving of the problems, that basically we have to have our local people very much involved.
Oh, I understand that, but...
But the anonymous piece.
Right, like it goes to Jim Sigona, and, you know, if everybody kind of knows it goes to Jim, and it just, it'd be nice if it were not in Tip, a third party. And I think it was the actual, I forget the name now, but the one that I actually found at Capitol Conference when I started down this road, is the one that, where it's handled by a third party completely. So like the Jim Sigona person will be taken out. It would still go to the five building principals, and all that's still local, which is very important.
Yes.
But I just think taking Jim out of the equation is something we should look at.
All right, so we could definitely discuss that.
And plus, he just picked up more stuff with EMIS, and if we can take it off his plate, you know, why not do it?
Okay, so we'll put down on a workstation or something a little bit later. I'll make a notation. All right. Facilities update. Just wanted to kind of go over a little bit regarding that. On the twentieth of June, that was last Thursday, we did have a site review and a site visit by OFCC. Eugene Chippqua was not able to attend. He was, came down with the flu quite quickly.
No way.
And so Paul Brown was here, and Paul's been with us for quite some time. And so he did conduct that tour at that time. Those that were present were myself, Mr. Pfister, Mr. Hoff, Art Hoff, and Mike Richley. And so we spent time doing that, probably almost two hours, going over that. An email did arrive from Mr. Chippqua, Eugene today, and he indicated that he saw, after having reviewed the information from OFCC and particularly from Paul Brown's report and their communication, he felt like that there were particularly just two, two real directions or options for us as a school district. And one of those would really be continuing with the L plan with adjustments, and then the other one would be really looking at a different configuration.
Okay.
So I would like for us, whether you want to do that through the president's report or now, for us to really look at a date for a workstation that could be relatively soon, so that we can begin making decisions and really know about where facilities may or may not be as we move toward our next ballot, whenever that might be. So...
Is it still, is it still the same timeframe for getting, I'm confused, because I was in the Columbus meeting. So are you saying that he has to report? Because they told us it would take four to six weeks, so I'm confused.
Well, I do not have, I have an email. I do not have an official report from OFCC.
You said there were two options, so I guess that's why I'm confused.
And I can get that clarified, but my thought was...
Does that make sense?
I haven't seen it.
I mean, because he said four to six weeks, so he told us already, it's been four days.
I, I think they were able to turn it around rather quickly.
Okay, that's a miracle.
Gary had some paperwork the other day, but I'm not sure.
Because remember, they said four to six weeks, so how do we go from four to six weeks to four days?
The one piece I don't have, I do think that they have made a decision about what our options are.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yes, I think, I do not have it in a letter from the executive director. I have it from Eugene.
Well, that person's interim anyway, so it's kind of weird.
So I do think that we have enough information, and by the time, if we have a date set, that in the next few days, I can press for that, saying that we have a meeting set, and that I now need the official word from the executive director, or even if it happens to be Mel and Eugene.
Sure. So are you thinking like the next two weeks, or is that good?
Yes, I think that would be good, if that's possible. And I think, well, it's hard to project, but I, we know a minimum, we will need an hour. I don't know what we need beyond that.
Well, the board meeting is on the twenty-second. Is that too long? Can we meet an hour before the board meeting, like we did today at five?
Oh, no, I think that is too late for us. In case we have something we have to get back to them on, it would be nice that we could have that then for the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Is it somewhere on the eighth? Eighth of July, or is that...
Eighth of July?
Yeah, yes. Like July fourth, July fourth weekend.
Is that bad? Will people still be away? Won't come Monday evening?
Yeah, I, I won't be home on Monday.
Okay.
But you guys can meet without me. I don't care. That's fine.
What day of that week might work for you?
Oh, Monday's the only day.
You'll be back Monday, Tuesday?
Tuesday at nine. Does that work for you?
Yeah. Are you being honest with me?
Tuesday at nine? We could have planned for that?
Tuesday at nine.
No, Tuesday, that's June nine. July nine, July nine.
Sam, keep your eye on six on that day from work. Is that in the time?
I think that would be the option.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right, so that keeps you from going out of town if we have that on a Tuesday. Does that work okay?
Does one.
Okay. July nine at six P.M.
Yeah.
So we'll get a meeting notice out, and we'll also get that posted, and that will be a workstation.
Let's plan for, and you can have your day made.
Two hours, but I'm hoping that...
Yeah, don't worry. Yeah, no, I'm good, no, I'm good.
If we could plan for six to eight that evening.
Six to eight?
I don't know that it'll last that long, but just so that...
So is there a way to get to the board the information that you received, or some additional information about...
So we're prepared?
Yes, I absolutely will.
That, that doesn't really came.
And, yes, and I will also push for what I call a more official letter.
Mm-hmm.
That will actually be on the letterhead via, instead of just an email.
Yeah, because who knows when they're going to hire the permanent person? They could still kind of, yeah.
We just have to make sure that they are all on the same page, that they're getting whatever their response is. It needs to be who is calling the response.
The sooner we can get that information, the better. I mean, if you can just share the email that you got,
Right.
so that we can, we can understand what, what maybe our options are.
Good to... All right, summer programs. Just, we've had a number of those underway. Safety City, that just completed. We had two weeks of that, and had all the stations were rather full, anywhere from twenty-three to twenty-five students, morning and afternoons, and that's our incoming kindergarten. And then we had Summer Academy, that just completed as well last week. In addition, we have the Stage Crafters, and they did their performances this weekend on Frozen Junior. A packed house for, when I was there, that had to be with a matinee that I heard well-attended on the other performances. And then we do have a creative recovery that we do for support for intervention for our students that remains still underway. During the month of July, after we get back on Fourth of July, there'll be an extended school year, and that's to support some of our students that are with special needs and at risk with their learning, to help that continue so they do not have laps of time as they're working on their skills, and that will be during the month of July. Any questions? All right, I think that wraps that up, and we're ready now.
Move on to item four, citizens' comments. We have Angie Dahl here.
I'm already got that.
Yeah, I got it, yeah. Just a couple of reminders, as I do at every meeting. We do limit it to five minutes. It's an opportunity to provide the board feedback and kind of give us information. We don't, as a rule, do back-and-forth questions or anything like that, but of course, I think we're generally all available by email, make appointments with the administration, things like that, if we do need that. But we're happy to hear concerns.
Okay.
And so...
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm Angie Dahl. My son just graduated from Tip High School. The reason I'm here today is to state my views on the new policy of Latin honors at graduation. When my son started high school, he understood that taking harder classes would not only benefit him educationally, but would boost his GPA, giving him more opportunities for scholarships in college. His junior year, he took a few classes at Edison, and his senior year, he opted to take all of the classes there. When I went to an open meeting for parents to voice their opinions on changing graduation honors, I spoke up. I said that it wasn't fair to change the system mid-strain, and what about the kid who had been planning to be valedictorian? Mr. Verhoff stated that there was a student who had planned on being valedictorian, but a CCP student had leapfrogged them in GPA. This made me wonder why we were changing the system. Was it because a CCP student would have been valedictorian? My biggest issue with the change is using unweighted Latin honors. My son was fortunate to achieve the top ten percent scholar banquet his junior and senior year. It was based on his weighted or informed class rank. He was also given the top scholar athlete award, meaning that he was the varsity male athlete with the highest GPA in the senior class. This was also based on weighted or informed class rank. But when he graduated, he had graduated cum laude, the lowest honor given. That's because Latin honors were based on unweighted GPA. Why are we using different systems for different awards? After graduation, I requested my son's class rank. I was told vice counselor, Ms. Everhart, Mr. Verhoff, and Dr. Kump that I wasn't permitted to see it, even though it could be reported to colleges and scholarship committees, it couldn't be reported to me. I find this disturbing. I believe it's his right to know how he ranked in his class. After arguing for several weeks and countless emails to the board, Mr. Stevens and Dr. Kump, I finally received his class rank. His informed class rank was number three. He graduated third in his class, but he didn't receive top honors at graduation. There's a major flaw in this system. We're punishing students who are taking harder classes and maybe getting a B in them. If you wanted to implement a new system, you certainly shouldn't have started with the senior class, who began their freshman year thinking that taking harder classes would boost their GPA and earn them top honors at graduation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item five, president's comments. I'll defer this one. I'm interested, getting through a long meeting here, so I'm saving them all up, so.
For December? Your December meeting?
I'm going to let it fly.
Five-hour meeting.
All right, now we'll move on to approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes. Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any questions, concerns?
I'll just note that Joelle met with me this afternoon and did find some dispellings here and there. Those have all been corrected and will be updated, but they did not change any of the meeting in the minutes.
Sure.
Meaning in the minutes. Those corrected ones have been updated as the attachments, and they have been made, and will be in the board document changes as well.
There you go. I think we're ready for a roll. Call roll.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes. That motion is approved. Moving on to the treasurer's report. Starting with A, the monthly technical report. Would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Moved and seconded Teresa and Joelle. Any discussion?
Business as usual, we're looking...
It's almost the same.
Yeah, it's almost the same. We're pretty identical, so... Do you have any questions or concerns? Feel free to give me a call.
Okay. Well, without further discussion, we're ready for a vote on that motion.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes. That motion is approved. Item B. Approval to convert the sixty-five thousand dollar advance from the general fund to the food service fund, approved by the board July twenty-third, twenty eighteen, resolution number two thousand eighteen point zero seven, point zero seven, to a transfer. I don't know if you want me to read those dates or if you want...
No, that's fine, okay.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Moved and seconded Teresa and Joelle. Any discussion?
Nope, talk about it in the year.
Yeah.
And well, next year, we will do a resolution. We're going to approve hopefully by tonight for next fiscal year, because we have payroll to cover for the, for the food service. I will be doing the idea that we had discussed earlier this past year on health insurance benefits, partially coming out of the general fund. That way, we'll have to see this transfer every year. I do expect that advance for fiscal year twenty being repaid back to the general fund. This is just a stop loss.
The, the stop gap.
For payroll in July. We're going to take care of that, because this is just getting ridiculous. Or who knows, Mr. Chen may be able to change all but four.
Maybe we'll just have time for us.
There's no further discussion. We're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes. That motion is approved. Item C. Who will have a number of advances and transfers as per the agenda? Entertain a motion.
So moved.
I'll second. Moved and seconded Sam and myself. Any discussion?
These are our regular end-of-year housecleaning items. We're just making sure we don't end any of our funds with a negative balance as per the final auditor's request, and so currently we have negative balances in our federal funds. We're waiting for the refund to come back from the feds, so we're going to cover that negative balance with a transfer, an advance from the general fund. Once that money comes in, we'll just pay it right back to the general fund in July. So, and then we also have, let's see. I do apologize, this... And then we have, food service is still a little short, so we have an additional sixteen thousand to transfer over to food service. And then we have the advance for next year, so...
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. He, Mrs. Heatherly, I apologize.
No, 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 Mr. Mrs., just knock it out.
All right, we're good to go.
Nobody wants to be at the ten-thirty every time.
Frank, did you say your vote?
Yes. Mr. Heatherly said yes, too.
Well, this vote doesn't count.
Well, quit calling on him.
Just be ambiguous.
All right, that motion is approved. Item D. Let's see, approval of fiscal year two thousand nineteen final appropriations as per the agenda and the attachment on the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Moved and seconded Sam and Teresa. Any discussion?
Just to note that these do include the advances that we just approved, and the transfers as well. There really wasn't that much more to it. We did receive a local grant fund request, and athletics had some additional money to give, so...
What's the altruista?
I, we were seeing...
I've never seen that before. Is that news?
It, no.
I feel like I've never seen it.
Yeah, I know when I was in assistant superintendent.
Okay.
Yeah.
They make the three grants?
Yeah, it's, it's a, yeah, it's an altruistic community support group that provides small...
So it's local?
Yes, toy area, toy.
I didn't know if it was like a state of Ohio or, okay, wow, well, thank you. Do we thank them? I mean, I...
Yes.
Sure.
I'll have to Google it. I've never heard of it. Okay. Interesting.
Okay. Going for the vote. Raise your vote. Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yeah.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Venters?
Yes. That motion is approved. Item E, approval of the fiscal year two thousand twenty temporary appropriations, again, as per the agenda and the attachment on the agenda. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded Ron and Sam. Any discussion?
I will just go ahead. This did come later than I, than I wanted it to. However, I will say that if you were to compare this financial activity with our five-year forecast, it's pretty damn close.
Okay.
So our general fund and the O one-six fund, those revenues and expenditures tied back pretty well. I think a little off here and there, but that's just because of better information that I have now than when I was back in May doing the five-year forecast. This does not include all three hundred sports activity accounts, because the coaches have not sent those budgets to me, so I'm not going to take a guess and just put numbers in there. I wait for them to turn their budgets in and have them approved by the athletic director. And speaking of which, the athletic director for the high school, J.D. and I discussed that he wanted the new athletic director to work with me and develop in the budget, rather than have J.D. fill something out.
Yeah, that's smart. Good for J.D.
So, so those items currently not in these temporary appropriations. I do not expect any expenses from those accounts in July anyway, so that there's time for us to put those on. Because right now, all we have to do is approve temporary appropriations. Our final appropriations will have to be approved till October.
And the boosters just met, too, so those numbers are included, because they just gave out some, two weeks ago.
The boosters.
Athletic boosters, they only had like three checks. They're only three teams in.
Okay.
How come there's nothing for the House Bill two sixty-four under...
Permanent.
Are we waiting for numbers on that?
House Bill two sixty, you mean a line item?
Yeah.
Permanent improvement, House Bill two sixty-four. You don't have an amount on that line item.
Okay, where are we looking?
So about the third grouping from the bottom, fourth grouping.
After bond retirement fund permanent improvement.
Oh, that's just, that's a fund we have on the books, it's still considered active, but that's not anything that we've done in the act of it again. I think I've always had that line item showing.
Okay. Okay.
Because.
Aren't we paying on that?
I'd have to look into that.
Right, because that was the middle school LT ball, we just, we just did the doors.
No, that, that's, um, that's coming out of something else. So right now, there won't be any expenses on that account, I'll look into it, just know that there's no activity expected in that for July. I'll double check on it.
Well, we just did the doors, took last one.
So when did you say we did the next, we did the, the permanent ones?
Permanents are due to the county in October. But, I mean, we've approved permanent appropriations in June before. Uh, this year, the board meeting fell a little earlier in June, so it was harder to try to get them ready. But other times, we've appropriated ninety percent of last year's total budget. And so that was our temporary while we waited for final appropriations to be approved.
Purpose of my question is centered around the fact that this health insurance program.
That's true, yes.
Do we need to, uh, does anything need to be appropriated to cover its, those expenses, um?
I will, I will say the amounts that are in this report right here include the increase currently if we stayed with the EPC. So if we do decide.
That's a bonus for us.
It is, if we do decide not to stay with the EPC and move, those funds, I, we shouldn't, would not need to exceed this total here.
I mean, just, just wanted to check and make sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions for these temporary appropriations?
Will you follow up with us on that House Bill two sixty?
Sure.
Before I thought we were paying on that.
Well, we have a House Bill two sixty-four, that may be, um. One moment, I can check something here.
I thought it was coming out of permanent improvement for the next thirty years or so.
In the final bill, we still have.
That's out of the O-O-O-O, the O-O-three-zero-zero-zero-zero, that's where we're paying for those improvements because it's with our current, um, emer- uh, permanent improvement funds go into that account.
Such as the doors.
So it's like, I mean, we didn't have anything from last year, when you look at the appropriations from last year, that line on.
That line is still blank as well.
Still blank.
I just need to.
So it sounds like we need to close out that, that.
But it, it is inactive, yeah.
Because it does look like it's what we're, yeah.
Let me make note of that here.
Well, because we're just, House Bill two sixty-four.
And that's nine zero one three, correct?
Uh, let me see.
Nine zero one three, O-O-three, nine zero one three.
Because if somebody pulls this up on the board doc and they're not in the meeting and they don't listen to our, then they'll get confused. Because that we're confused, we work here.
Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you.
We're ready for a vote.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Oh, thank you very much.
All right, moving on to item eight, old business, nothing on the agenda, is there any old business?
Um, yeah, I'd like to actually ask the question, why don't the honors and the top scholars banquet and, why don't those match up?
Well, that, it's, it's a good question, I mean, uh, I didn't realize that there was that level of a mismatch. And, and I can hear the concern about if someone has been working very hard and taking the challenging pieces and accomplishing a great deal, and then when you have your different levels with the Latin honors that it isn't one of the upper ones. So it is a piece, I'll have to actually go back and really sit down and talk with Mr. Beerhoff and, and really look at that. I know that we, you know, have the weighted and the non-weighted, and there is at that time, that we, we all as a group, we, there was a lot of information that we looked over and we made those decisions, so, uh, it does, sometimes when you're looking at it and then when you're starting to implement it, you'll learn new things. And, um, I, you know, from my viewpoint, I don't want any student that has worked very hard and that they have their eye on a goal and they feel like they've made it to feel discouraged when it doesn't happen. But I think part of that is we need to get more and more information about how this is going to be handled and what's going to be worked through. Yes, that will be a piece that I'll be working on this week to find, get more information about how, and how we can make those align better and why that didn't align as closely as in, in my mind I thought it was going to be.
Right, well, yeah, there's always that implementation piece with anything, but you can't think of it. Every part of that moving puzzle.
I just remember us sitting on the same committee and we determined that it would be unweighted, but I don't.
For, for which one?
With the Latin.
We, we discussed whether it would be weighted or unweighted, and the committee had recommended and decided on unweighted, but I don't remember the details as to why we chose that, other than not as in the context of the implications raised by the dolls tonight, but, um, I think we were looking at students all, um, running their own rates, um, you know, choosing their own path, and looking at all students, not just high achieving students. I don't know, I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly, but I remember the context of the conversation.
I guess my question was, um, why, why then would you not honor top scholars for students running their own rates? I mean, why wouldn't they be included in top scholars?
I don't, I don't remember the context, but I.
Right, I, I, that's what I'm saying, that's why I think we need to look into this because, well, it's also my recollection that there were students that graduated with our highest Latin honor that were not invited to top scholars. So that's the kind of, you know, like, we, yeah, we gotta figure out the system, yeah.
It could be in that and they could not be in NHS because those are.
Yes.
And, and I, I would say that that could happen, it shouldn't be a rarity, but it could happen because some of those are what I would call a teacher reckons peace in that.
Well, National Honor Society is, you know, they have their, they have their own rules and regulations.
Yes, they do.
So that, I think that they kind of cover themselves as far as how they're governed, you know.
Well, I think it's important because we don't, we have such an amazing AP program at our high school, we're super proud of that, so we don't want to get into a situation where these kids who, you know, would typically be taking these AP classes start not taking them. So kids do want to be recognized, when you work hard for thirteen years, especially those last four years, they want to be recognized somewhere, somehow, some way, because it's, if you're a kid that doesn't play sports and your whole thing is you study, 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 and you're proud of that, you want other people to know that about you. And so we just have to find some way of recognizing the way to grades for the AP classes. Otherwise, we're telling the kids that take those AP classes, you know, they just don't get recognized.
Yeah, it is a fine line because one of the pieces that we did talk about in that particular committee work was that in some situations for one individual, taking the AP and as many APs as they possibly can is part of who they are.
Exactly, that's all I'm trying to say.
And others that they get caught up in the.
The race.
The race, the ranking and the competition, and they're not necessarily taking them for the direction they're going or, um, or even their course interests at times. And so I, I think that was one of the pieces that we were trying to work through, knowing that really those kind of loads are stressful for students because many of those, many of those students are also in other things.
Right.
So, uh.
That makes it even more important that they should be recognized, right? I mean, because if you're doing all that AP and all that extracurricular, I mean, that's, they just want to be recognized, I mean, that's all.
So we'll work on that and we will try to bring something back to the board or, and then we'll have it reported in on Friday for that day.
Sounds good. Okay, moving on to new business, um, and I'll turn it back over to Dr. Trump, moving aside.
All right, item A, recommend approval of the twenty twenty tax budget for the Tip City Library.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded Sam and Teresa, any questions? I know we've got guests here who have been waiting patiently, if you have any comments or.
Yeah, we have a couple, a couple comments. Always have something to say.
Um, first of all, thank you for reviewing the budget, we, this is a step that we have to go through to present to our budget commission at the county level. Um, just for your information, Ohio is third in the nation in per capita spending in public libraries, which creates a very strong resource for our community. We continue to reduce overhead while increasing, um, programs and shifting our material collection from books to online media and digital media. We've also implemented several things for job training, including heavily publicizing Lynda dot com, which provides free job training at any level, as well as, um, hiring a new teen librarian to hopefully bring, um, that lost demographic back to the library. Lisa's gonna talk, um, about some of the programs, but if you have any other questions, we're here to answer them.
I'm Lisa, I'm the director of the library, people call me Hey Library Lady. In twenty eighteen, I wanted to let you know, a hundred and twenty-seven teachers from this school district requested over twenty-four hundred books from the library of materials and things that they were not able to obtain through the district, and that we can get that for all of these students. That, we're looking to break that record already through this year, that was just last year. Um, because we're part of a smaller consortium of libraries, I'm able to pull in books and things like that. Um, I think one of the things I want to make sure you understand is the public library in this community and the way that we're trying to move forward, we're a gap filler. There's little gaps of things that seem to fall through and we're able to fill those gaps. We help after school, um, we feed kids, we work with Tip Munro Community Services, we help a lot of children with their literacy. Right now is our busiest time, is summer. Summer is, and I never understood that coming academically, that was when I was off, and now this is our biggest time. And I can't tell you how important it is, and I wanted to read you just some numbers because these are impressive and very impressive when I have to turn them into the other public library statistics. Currently, we have five hundred and thirty-three new children enroll in summer reading for the summer, just for this summer alone, bringing our total to seventeen hundred and ninety-seven students. And adults with their parents or their guardian that will enroll just this summer to compete in a sense for reading. And what we mean compete is we have coupons and things that we give away for free, which is an incentive. Children love anything that we can give them for free, as do adults. We are really trying to find ways to meet the needs of the community, very, in a nimble way. I work with everybody downtown and the school district. I'm thrilled that we are working with the middle school, with the middle school all read and supporting that, and we're very excited about working with the high school with having the author, the Pulitzer Prize author coming in. Everything that we do in our very tight little budget, anything that's extra is grant funded. Everything has to come from outside. I just want to give you a snapshot, this is Monday through Friday of this week. We have Mahjong, Bridge, Best Seller Club, crafts for teens, RT Industries will come and spend three hours doing crafts, family story time, Project War volunteers meet, Chamber of Commerce is meeting tomorrow morning, baby cuddle tied with books, preschool story time, teen book club, Little Bit coding club, movie night with popcorn, toddler story time, um, a coffee tasting class of sixty-seven people registered. And this Friday, we have an indoor inflatable planetarium that was too big for the library that will have all day the church next door learning about the planets. This is Monday through Friday of this week alone. So we will see thousands of kids coming in and out, and I have to tell you, the other big group that we service are homeschooling children. So it's a huge community in this area. So I want to thank you for your time, um, you know, the library just maybe appear as a house that houses books, but we're really a home to this community, so thank you.
I love the new addition of, in the, in the alley.
Oh, the alley's very popular, I didn't even mention that.
It's nice.
All the alcohol.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote.
Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunaway?
Yes.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Heatherly?
Yes.
Mr. Ventures?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Item B, recommend approval to accept the following resignations as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded Teresa and Corinne, any discussion? Hearing none.
Mrs. Dahl?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes.
It's gonna take you all the.
I know.
It's also, it's also.
I like it better.
All right, item C, recommend approval to employ Steve Beerhoff as the assistant superintendent for a two-year contract for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. Any proper certification paperwork?
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Moved and seconded Teresa and Joel, any discussion? Hearing none, ready for a vote?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes. Thank you, congratulations.
And congratulations. You get your bags back.
Item D, uh, approval to, sorry, mine's just a little slow, I'm on there, I'm still, there we go. Item D, approval to employ Craig Kramer as the Tiplenew High School Athletic Director on a two-year contract for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, and the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year, any proper certification paperwork.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded Teresa and Corinne, any discussion?
I just want to mention that Mr. Kramer will be at our July meeting so that, uh, he can be actually be in front of the KITV camera so that he can be introduced to the community, but essentially, we were able to, uh, have him join us for that workstation we had a little bit earlier in the morning. So we're very excited to have him onboard.
Okay, ready for a vote?
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes. That motion is approved.
Sorry, mine's just a little slow. There we go. Item E, approval to employ the following as certified teachers on a limited contract for the two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty school year, any proper certification and paperwork, that's Sarah Ashburn, Kaylee Harper, and Alyssa May.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded Sam and Corinne, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So getting the enrollment numbers, the fourth grade class is at two oh two. Is twenty-five kids per class unreasonable for fourth grade? Do we really need, you know, a ninth teacher plus twenty-five thousand dollars in benefits? I'm just asking, so, um, and I will share this on this. Because my concern is what happens when we go to middle school and we've got thirty-one kids in an algebra class, that's what I don't like.
And I would prefer that doesn't happen either, and we need to really work on that schedule to see if we can get that leveled out better.
Right.
It is hard when we have certain things clustered, particularly with, I'll say, with, uh, traveling teachers like Bor and Band and things of that nature, vocal as well, we have music travel. But what we did look at, we looked at four years, and I will just pass this chart for you to look at. We looked at four years, the past four years from two thousand fifteen, sixteen, all the way to eighteen, nineteen. And, uh, over those years, we looked at the average, and there was an average of twelve students that were added each year. So with this, we have a range of anywhere from two thou- two hundred and twelve to two hundred and sixteen students that we're projecting to be in this grade level. And when we look at that, and we know that it's difficult the way the pods and the things are created there at LT Ball, uh, to add an additional line, which you have to kind of, it, it's not an even, what I call split, you know, to, to divvy out, so there's additional coordination and they've not had it for a while. So for the planning purposes, and then with this data, we really felt like that we did need to do that because if you have eight sections, you'll have twenty-seven in a classroom, and that's at fourth grade.
That's if we get twelve open enrollments, what if we get two?
Not open enrollments, new.
Or I didn't mean open enrollment, new, new students, you said enrollment, right, 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 that's right.
Do we get twelve new kids in every grade?
No, not.
Just in fourth grade?
And so, and so, it's interesting, and, and once again, it, it is a projection, and that's all we can have.
It's just a lot of money to spend on if we get twelve new people in fourth grade. Because then if you look at the enrollment for first, second, and third grade, it's a hundred and eighty-two, a hundred and sixty-six, and one seventy-nine. So those are pretty much our lowest three grades out of the K-twelve. So then now you have this fourth grade teacher who is the ninth teacher, and then what does she do next year when we only have one eighty-two? Eight would be more than sufficient.
So, I mean, it is something that we have to look at, and once again, it's, it's a one-year contract. You know, this is a one, because they're, even though they're on resident education.
Could we make them a long-term sub or something? I mean, I don't know.
They would, they would turn into a full-time teacher.
At the six.
I just don't like spending a lot of, that kind of money on a what if we get twelve kids in that grade.
Does this, whoever this position was given to, do they know that it's just because this is a bubble class? And like, I, I mean, are they supposed to then follow this class to fifth grade as well?
Not ne- no, not necessarily. We have done this where it has followed for a number of years, really with this class being bigger. We have done this where it has followed for a number of years, really with this class being bigger, that we've had nine sections. And so that's one of the reasons also we began really looking very closely at open enrollment. And in this particular class, we just have a larger group in our community because right now with the open enrollment for that fourth grade section, we have only three that happen to be staff members and no other, and that's part of negotiated agreement.
Right, that's two oh two. It's one-eighty-nine, three staff is two oh two.
Right, and so we have no non-residents other than staff members that are part of this. And that, that's a bit of a rarity, but we really began looking at that time that open enrollment, we need to be able to fill in and not surpass. So it is a larger group coming through. I know it's the projection. One thing about it, it, it is what I call filling a position. It's a position that ultimately did move on, and I understand what you're saying.
It's just a lot of money to spend because if we get none, then eight would have been fine. So I don't know.
Right.
It's only June.
It's not an increase. I mean, it's the same number. We're not adding a position.
We're not adding a position. And what I will say that with eight, yeah. So I do have the projection with eight, eight sections of what it would be. And once again, even with the, with eight sections at that, I'd have to check, but you probably already have it broken out of how many it is in each.
Well, it's, yes.
It's just, it's twenty-five kids per, twenty-five kids per class. And we ideally like to keep it below twenty-five with our, you know, the grade levels. And we still consider that as an intermediate.
I just want to make sure we're not jumping the gun and planning for something that never happens because that doesn't, you know?
Right, yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. I, I, I do feel that we will have more. Once again, it is a projected estimate. I, there's no way I can confirm that we're going to have twelve for sure. I do know that we have housing that's coming in, and it's hard to know what grade level they are, what, what, what grade level they're going to come in at. For some reason or another, we have seen.
A lot of fourth graders.
A lot of fourth graders that continue to enroll, and I really can't plan that.
How many fifth grade teachers do we currently have?
Have you fourth grade?
Fifth grade?
Fifth grade is small, one eighty-three.
But I mean, like next year, the class is gonna go to fifth grade, so they're gonna, so they have.
So it will be a question we'll have to work through, and we'll have to see. We'll have to see, we'll have many more move in that are actually ours because we will be adding open enrollment this class.
And this will be the first time we've had nine fourth grade pods, correct? I think so.
No. In years back, we did.
Yeah.
In fourth grade?
Yes.
Correct, went, right. We had a teacher that went from third grade to fourth grade after my first year.
Okay.
She came in with me and then she moved on. We had a really big third grade class.
So there is a physical room for fourth grade at LT Ball?
It's a space that they are creating, and that, that's a whole nother piece too.
Right, that was my question. Where's the physical room?
Yeah, that's what they've been working through.
So along that same line, I mean, what is, let, let's say we don't get the extra students that, that work in the academy.
Twelve fourth graders.
I mean, what, what, what would be the options? I mean, would we look at open enrollment and, and call some of the people that applied for open enrollment and fill that class so that we could, I mean, I mean, that's money that would come back in the district to help pay this expense? Or what, what, what might we do in this situation if?
But then, then they, you know what I'm saying, then they're gonna, they're not gonna open enrollment. I, I like what you're thinking though, I get that.
I mean, we just gotta look at other options.
Because it's fill the bus, so I'm thinking, well, you're already on the, fill the bus.
But, but you already got the bus, I mean, you might as well fill it, right?
Right, because they're getting money.
So.
So, I mean, that would be an unprecedented, we've never done that. And we do have cutoff dates, I mean, it's a unique situation. What I would say, there's one of two things that we could look at. None of them are what I call neat and tidy. One is that essentially, we have two non-residents that have applied. So the word is that, that people know and understand, and also there's that whole thing of once you get students kind of established, by the time they're in fourth grade, they're kind of liking their school and wanting to move through. But, so it'll only be two, so that's not going to be that much of a difference for us. And so it'd be a precedence, I probably would not have a tendency to do or set up with only two additional people. The other piece is that we have to keep a very close eye on the kindergarten. The kindergarten, if we, we feel like we have had a very strong enrollment process this year with the, the online, now that we've done it a while, and we have as strong a numbers as we've ever had at this time of year, the part we don't know is, are there others lingering out there? And we're talking about, are there twenty more out there or eighteen more or something like that? That's something we don't know. If it really would boost up very much farther, we would have to look at that. And so then that, that would be a question, but you have to look at certifications. So it may end up be, I mean, that's where it's not neat and tidy. It's not necessarily the new person that you hired that has the kindergarten certification. So somebody else may have to be bumped, and so it might be a domino effect if you really have. The other thing, yeah, so I'll just go back. To have twenty-three students in a fourth grade is not a problem. Not a problem for me because I know that they can still, they can still utilize that extra support. And we get to a point where supporting in reading and some of those kind of things, unless you are given the extra support because your need is very significant, it drops off as you move to the middle school.
Mm-hmm.
So this is kind of last chance if you're kind of borderline, you know, that there would still be smaller classes and maybe a little bit more attention to some of those. It's not strong, for example, in literacy or even mathematics.
Well, here's an outside-of-the-box idea. What about Mrs. Lammers? Because we're only doing this for one year. Is there anywhere her schedule could kind of fill in for this year?
So with Mrs. Lammers, I mean, ultimately, she would be certified to be able to do something like that. The difficulty is that with our gifted program, what happens to those that we're trying to serve? So then that would dilute, and we'll end up needing to have a replacement for her or a part-time person. So I think it's kind of borrowing Peter to Pay Paul type thing.
Right, but we just, we kind of need it. She could work with a group of students for a whole year. That'd be kind of a neat experience.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, it absolutely would. I think she has a special calling though to work with those that, that need to be challenged and, yeah.
All right, I just had to ask the question.
Okay, is there no further discussion? We're ready for a vote.
Say. Mr. Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Yes, that motion is approved.
All right, item F, re, recommend approval to employ the following classified staff for the two thousand nineteen, twenty-twenty school year pending proper certification and paperwork. That's Castel Leon Bryant, that he is a bus driver. Art Chin Hunter, well, I have this, Fookers, Ma, Fookers.
Fookersman.
Fookersman?
I'm sure I said it wrong.
Okay. Myron Griffiths, he also is a bus driver, and Katie Sullivan.
I'll make motion.
I'll second.
Moved in second, it's Sam and Joelle, any discussion?
I just highlight those two as bus drivers because they will not hear the scene meeting. And certainly, we welcome them as well.
Good job, bus driver.
Yes, well, who we is.
And Dave, I just want to make sure on this EMS coordinator step six because they're coming in higher than what Greg Cheney's at. And we took part of this.
Greg Cheney is a retired, rehire.
Well, I understand.
He understands.
Yep, through Miami County ESC, I, I understand that. We also took part of the EMS away, or EMA, EMS, away from, I'm not exactly sure what part you took, and you gave it to Jim Sagona.
Jim is just.
So.
A testing coordinator.
Right.
Yeah, but that's not normally the EMS coordinator.
But, so how did we come up with this salary schedule, is all I'm saying?
That, that's Dr. Kup, she gave the, the recommendation for the step.
How did we pick that?
So, well, are you talking about the step or the actual salary?
Yeah, the step six.
Okay. So we looked at what the experience was, the full-time, and then the, the part-time.
Okay.
And then that's how we arrived at that. And then the EMS, the, the actual step sheet, that was deliberated from, formerly when it was in-house, when we had that as a position.
Okay.
And then we projected the number of raises because what we had was, I'll say, for example, maybe, I don't know how many years, like two thousand fourteen.
Were you asking how it was created or how she was selected as step six?
No, I just want to, yeah, because it, it's basically, I don't want that person coming in higher than, I thi, this is why we need human resources, because it always feels like we're kind of picking and choosing and, yeah. I just want to make sure we're always.
Well, normally when we hire somebody in, we look at their use of experience and place them on the schedule.
Right.
And so what I heard Dr. Kup say was she had full-time years and part-time years, and step six is where she fell.
Okay.
I don't know how many years she had, it wasn't part of that.
Looks like from two thousand six to now.
So she had, I think she said she had thirteen.
Thirteen was the number of years that she had indicated, and some of those were part-time. And so that's why when we went with that, that we thought that that was fair. We also, and it's, in any position today, you also have to be competitive. So we wanted to be fair about it, that we wanted to be competitive enough that we would be able to get a solid person that did have experience.
Right, and I guess, you know, I'm, I'm a big person, a big proponent for human resources, you know I am. Because when you start picking and choosing, this is a small office, meaning people who physically work in this building. And, you know, I worked in a small office, people talk, they compare notes. And the best and the biggest and fastest way to kill a climate culture is to start picking and choosing who gets raises, this person gets a raise, this person. And then people start talking.
Sure.
And I just want to be fair to the people that are already working here. And I want to compensate people fairly for coming here, but that's something that I value. We want, you get what you pay for, so I appreciate and understand that. I just think at some point, we need to really look at the salaries of the people that are already working here too. So I feel like that's part of the climate culture, it needs to be part of the climate culture.
And then, Dave, do you know this person socially outside of work?
No, it turns out it's a different Katie Sullivan.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, I tried, I was, I went to look at her and say hi and.
Different, different person. I think in HR person would use that same strategy. They would look at years of experience and apply that and see where they fall on the scale.
I, I think we have it just fair in this case.
Right, this is the third person in this office that's gotten a raise in the last few months, so then.
Well, but I mean, this, this is, she's coming in with this experience.
I understand.
Yeah, so I do think it's fair.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote.
One more. Spano?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item G, approval to change the status from leave of absence to full-time employment status as per the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Moved in second, it's Joelle and Teresa, any discussion? Hearing none.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item H, recommend approval of the following change in contract. John Everson from Step Zero Teacher's Aid to a Step One Teacher's Aid. And John is an aide at the Tippecanoe High School.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Moved in second, it's Joelle and Teresa. Any discussion? Hearing none, we're ready for a vote.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item I, approval of the following two thousand nineteen summer school staff as per the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
So I can.
Moved in second, Teresa and Sam. Any discussion?
What, are these new, I mean?
These are additions that have not been on before. And for the summer high school, when we were looking at, once again, that credit, I'll call it the credit recovery or the support that we have a need for, the, the level with French support.
Okay. Is French III something we normally offer in summer school?
Yes.
Yes. I don't know. Me neither. But now.
It's just very helpful. You might be able to help with that.
This is like the fourth or fifth year in a row that they've, they've done this. It's for students to, maybe didn't take French their freshman year or took a year off, maybe their sophomore or junior, and they're trying to be able to take French IV as senior.
I didn't know because Killian asked to take Spanish next year, and she was told because she took a year off, she couldn't take it. They didn't tell her that she could do it over summer school.
We haven't offered Spanish. We haven't had an instructor who's been willing to do that over the summer. Miss Moore is a bit willing to do that.
Okay.
But we could certainly look at that several.
No, it's too late now, but that's okay. I just was wondering because I didn't know what that was.
Good question.
Thank you.
Okay. There's no further discussion, we're ready for a vote.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item J, approval to enter the Graduation Alliance Drop-Out Prevention Program partnering with the Montgomery County ESC at a cost of five-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars per month for a student as needed.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Moved in second, it's Joelle and myself, any discussion?
How, how are students added? I, I, you gave us a great summary in the Friday Board update. I know that there's one student targeted. How do, how do other students get identified and added throughout the year?
Well, part of this, I think, is in some cases is through, for example, guidance and/or even through our nurses, you know, through that, that kind of care program where it could be a, a number of reasons why school is not a strong option for them during regular school hours. And that they really need someone really checking in on them and helping them through the process to help stay on track because they are not during regular hours in the institution when they are feeling well enough to be able to do it. Or their anxiety that they're in a spot where that's a little bit calmer and they're able to, to try some of those lessons. It, it is a unique case. I see it in many ways as another piece to our health and wellness as, as helping those to not become despair when they're not able to take it just the, the general path of what most of our students are able to do. And yet help them maneuver through and be able to graduate.
Can we afford this cost?
We don't.
It's an addition to the super contracted cost, there are additional costs. And are you aware of any other Miami County school districts that are joining us?
I can't tell you which ones are joining. I know that the Alliance came to the Miami County Superintendent's and did a, a presentation, and there was a great deal of interest. And there are many school districts that are seeing the need, and they're not for sure how to fill it, how, how to make that happen. And once again, even if it is for one student, it would be extremely beneficial.
Do you, do we select students for this, or can they ask to do this? How does that?
That's, that's a good question. We work through the Graduation Alliance really a, a bit as part of the, when I'll say the process of that. The other piece is, we do have Mrs. Creekmore, and she does a piece, but is at a different level. And that's also thing that when, even though this sounds quite expensive, that when we think about what we're providing with our own in-house Mrs. Creekmore, there does become a threshold where it's too much of a load as far as the number of students, and also by doing the contact. As it's said here, that there's coaching and online tutors available twenty-four seven, and it's the cause of that. And that, that's very hard to have a staff member have those kinds of extended hours.
So is this a place that they go to, or is this online?
It's an online piece.
And then would they still be TIP graduates, or do they become students somewhere else?
No, they'll become TIP graduates.
Okay.
So let me continue to explore this a little bit. When, over the past, say, five years, how many students are we not graduating that might have benefited from this program?
A good question. I would say zero to one, I don't know. Do you have a better feeling for that in the last three years?
In the last three years, we would not have had any this past year, probably not any in the last two years. We have a very unique situation that's going on with the student right now. We have a very unique situation that's going on with the student right now, we have, in our minds, exhausted all resources with this student. Um, we're working with the courts with this student. As, as I gave Dr. Combs that summary, um, there's certain progress that these students have to make within the Graduation Alliance program. If they're not making that, that progress, we don't pay after two months.
Yeah.
Um, so I think that that, they have some skin in the game with this as well, with Graduation Alliance. Um, there are supports that go beyond what, what Mrs. Creekmore could provide as far as counseling and things like that to go along with this program. Um, again, we get to choose who participates, so this would be our most extreme situations.
Who are you identifying as the point person, is it the counselor, or is it an administrator, is it Mrs. Creekmore?
As far as who would report to Graduation Alliance, it would be the, the high school principal.
Yeah. Okay.
And would be in communication with them.
Okay.
And the counselor, um, as far as who makes that decision, uh, that would be a team decision.
I'd say it's probably almost a little bit of everybody kind of figuring that out together.
Right.
No, my question was just, and then, um, if we vote for this, will this then get aligned in our policies? And how, how do we keep track of this now? Do we have a policy about graduation and, and how to align students that are achieving the traditional educational path?
I don't think we have anything in our policy about, um, online students or credit recovery students currently. I think they just fall under the, the twenty-one credits that are necessary for graduation. And we monitor that and, and report those on their transcript.
So, I mean, we, we, this district takes all pride in our graduation rate. And we, we've done an excellent job, and maybe that's to do with Mrs. Creekmore and, and, and the work she does. But, I mean, I, I'm struggling with, you know, providing this program now. Whereas I understand that there's no cost to the district as long as we don't have a student enrolled in the program.
Correct.
It's just an option for us to use.
Correct.
Um, and so, um, I, I mean, I guess that's okay, we want, we want kids to graduate, so, so don't. What is Mrs. Creekmore's now, I mean, it sounded like, depending on if we, if we get a child in this program, that her level of effort is gonna be reduced um, uh, in this, in her needs for helping thi- this child, whoever we might be enrolled. I mean, is, is she actively employed that we don't, you know, we, you know, this, this, to free her up is, 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 you, you understand what I'm trying to.
I, I see exactly where you're going, Mrs. Spano, and Mrs. Creekmore had a caseload of thirteen students this year um, that she saw as home instruction students, this student included. So, we see this as a way to reduce her caseload in that extreme circumstances. We've worked with her, and over the last two years, she has said, ten's about the max I can go.
Thirteen is way too much.
And so this would help us to alleviate that, that caseload, again, in those extreme circumstances. This is a student that would only be working when Mrs. Creekmore was there. The other twelve students that she was seeing, there was progress that was taking place when she wasn't there. If we were gonna pay Mrs. Creekmore to be with this student all the time that they needed to work, we would far exceed that five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Well, the thing that I like is, um, she had, had thirteen this year, and this one comes out, that's more time and quality time that she's able to spend with the other twelve.
Correct.
That needs to happen, yeah.
Yeah, she has a full, what you call, caseload of students.
Yeah, that, that's a lot.
Okay. Just no further discussion, I think we're ready for a vote. Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item K, recommend approval to enter into a five-year contract with Coca-Cola beverages.
I'll move.
Second?
Moved in second, Corinne and Teresa, any discussion?
I just had a weird question, I don't know if you did this or I did this, why did Pepsi not even bid on this? That was the weirdest thing that was, and this is a ten-page contract, I was like, what the heck?
Uh, we did have.
It's like a detailed contract.
We had a Pepsi contract.
Yeah.
They came in with a representative, and we told her what we were looking for.
Okay.
She says she'd get back to us.
Okay.
And they never did.
Yeah, I just thought it was weird.
I, she got back to me today, they were doing some reorganizing and changing how they were doing stuff, yeah, and, uh, I mean, the Coke contract far exceeds what we had with Pepsi last.
I like Coke anyway, so I was happy, but it just was weird to have a no bid when you've got that and you're existing, relate that, but that was weird.
It was very, very strange.
Not a big deal. Not a big deal.
Okay. Make it ready for a vote. Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item L, recommend approval to contract with Track Services Company to replace the track services, including track oval, chute runoff, high jump, long jump, and pole vault runway for one thousand, one hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred, uh, pricing obtained through Sourcewell Corporate Cooperative purchasing. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Teresa and Corinne, any discussion?
Uh, just wanted to note that Mr. Fister did a great job in getting this a little off-season in that it was not during the summer month. And we do not have a meet scheduled, so they'll be able to do it, and it was a nice savings with that.
Do you know if he put red or black, because it said red.
Black.
Oh, cool.
Red, he said gets really.
It fades really fast, that's what I was wondering about, yeah, fades really fast.
And it gets dirty, and he said, yeah, and black, it just.
Perfect, good job, Gary.
So is this coming out of our PI money, is this coming from?
This is, um, actually coming out of the general fund.
Out of the general.
Yeah, it's included in the five-year forecast, originally had a budget of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, we found some of that in the budget, that was a big saving.
And now it's. Yeah, now it's under one eighty-five, so, yeah, he was very surprised.
Seventy thousand dollars, take that in there.
And do we get a warranty or anything with this?
That I don't know, but I'm sure we do.
I think it said something about there, but I remember reading something about it.
I, I, he said, Mr. Fister stated that our current track surface is twelve years old, uh, that's past the normal useful life that you get out of the track, so.
I'm excited for the kids, that'll be fun for them.
Yeah, it'll be nice, we have a couple lanes right now that it has a little notice, try to not be in those lanes, or just a little extra warn.
That's great.
It says a five-year warranty, I don't.
Yeah, I was, I was whenever I read.
It's just what I was thinking, five years.
The party board update or a sub, separate attachment, but there was a warranty.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item N, recommend approval to update our student handbooks to include our new nightlock equipment.
I'll make the motion, I'll second.
Moved in second, Teresa and Adewel, any discussions?
I just wanna say I have great appreciation for, uh, first, the Miami County grant that we were able to get from the Miami County Foundation that helped us, but also the permanent improvement dollars that we used for that as well. And, uh, the aspect of our maintenance crew that have been diligent, uh, and we have, um, I believe, all five buildings completed this time.
So we did the installation ourselves?
Yes.
We rented a jig.
Okay.
That they were able to just put up the door.
That's awesome.
Dr. Combs, this building's done too.
Yes, as well as the board office.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote. Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item N, whereas the TIP City Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of two school buses, oh, excuse me, wrong thing.
No.
It's, it's the right thing, it's the wrong, wrong area.
Yeah, girl, it's, it's a school buses.
Oh, I, I.
You're on one.
Run right in.
And it's, uh, approval, well, no, it's the right thing, it's, it's a little unusual, isn't it?
Oh.
All right, here we go, it says public content, and I thought, it's not quite my recommendation setup.
There, there's, the motion is blank, it's under public content.
All right, there we go. Uh, whereas the TIP City Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of two school buses. Therefore, be it resolved that the TIP City Board of Education wishes to participate and authorize the Southwestern Ohio Educational Purchasing Council to advertise and receive bids on said boards behalf as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of a school bus.
Need a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved in second, Corinne, second, any discussion?
Just, just, uh, one will come from the O three permanent improvement fund, and one will come out of the general fund transportation budget, it's what we've been doing.
So we've discussed a number of times before, as we buy these things about the trade-in or, or the disposal of, of, of our buses and getting rid of. My opinion, we've been getting very low dollars for, um, the disposal unit that we, we do. I've been advocating us looking at, uh, an online auction through, uh, GovDeals or some, something of that nature. Is, is there any chance we can, we can explore that this time with, with, with disposal of those?
Actually, I know that Mr. Fister has used that, uh, uh, online government piece for, for other things, so we'll communicate that to him.
Okay, hearing no other discussion, I think we're ready for a vote. Dahl?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item O, recommend approval of the following overnight trip, high school band and guard to band camp July fourteenth through nineteenth.
I'll move, oh, go ahead, I'll be the second.
Okay.
Moved in second, Sam and Corinne, any discussion?
And that would be at Mount Vernon College.
That's where we're live here.
And this is the second year there.
They like it there.
They do, yes.
It's good, that was a good choice.
Ready for a vote, Nate, when you want. Spano?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Item P, uh, recommend approval of the, excuse me? Item P, recommend approval to affirm policy, twenty-four thirteen career advising, there are no changes to this policy.
I'll move.
Second?
Moved in second, Corinne, Teresa, any discussion?
This is referred to through our Niola as a technical date.
Hearing no further discussion, we're ready for a vote. Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item Q, recommend approval of the General Service Contract with Meta, that's Metropolitan Educational Technology Association for fiscal year twenty twenty.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Moved in second, it's single Adewel, any discussion?
How long have we been with Meta?
Well, it used to be Medeka.
Right.
Uh, it's been years, um, I wanna say more than ten years.
Ever changed with Carla Frame, I think you and I were first on the board, and Carla was attending.
Right, that's when we got acquired by the other company.
Right, Carla was attending those meetings, I think you were just new, so that's been three and a half, four years, you know, that happened.
Uh, the original goal of Meta was to try to help reduce the costs down to nothing for school districts.
Yeah, it's going the other direction.
And it is still going up, so if you, so this year's contract shows a charge of sixteen seventy-five per student, sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents versus last year's sixteen dollars per student. Uh, however, um, so that did go up, like Sam and I, but it's a little, little less than five percent. But we also had more students enrolled this past year, so we were twenty, or twenty-four seventy-two, and now they're, they have us at twenty-five twelve, so.
Why do I remember, I remember weird things sometimes, the original goal was like ten dollars per student, wasn't it ten dollars?
As the teacher, I, I, Tim was popping my mind.
Three and a half years, I remember that, ten dollars, we were so excited, now we're at sixteen seventy-five.
They were hoping to, also, well, what, they were also hoping to offset this, our school district public charges by using other entities that were non-public, such as hospitals and things like that.
Right, and it didn't happen, did it, when they, yeah.
It didn't pan out, I think they're still working on things, but that's for Meta to state, but, yeah, their original goal has not happened so far.
So, along that line, I mean, I'm not advocating now, but, I mean, what are our options? Can we explore options for the future, maybe, um, see what, what other avenues we can, we can pursue?
Uh, these are ITC sites, uh, there are, we, I wanna say twelve throughout the state of Ohio, uh, they're located in different areas, the thing about Meta is they're local.
Mm-hmm, I remember that was a big, that was a big, that must have been dollars.
I'd just be interested in a comparison, I mean, if, 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 you know, if this is the going rate and we're getting, you know, or within some percentage of the going rate, then I'm good to go. But I mean, I just think we gotta do our due diligence instead of every year just saying, hey, yeah, we're going back to them over and over again.
At least it wasn't a twenty.
Sounds familiar, huh?
At least it wasn't a twenty-six percent increase, it was seventy-five cents, it wasn't quite as bad, but we're definitely going in the wrong direction with these people. That's, that's understood.
Okay.
We'd also have to just make sure that those ITCs could support the programs that we're currently doing.
Hey, that'd be a good thing for us to all try to check into at Capo Conference, like, ask around, see, I mean, yeah.
What kind of service they're getting.
That's always a good place to.
But it, I, I agree, it's a little bit like the insurance, I mean, we should be able to add you the information, what is the going rate, we just.
Just which ITCs provide these services and, right, good jobs.
Sure.
I mean, we do go, we do have staff that do attend training at the Meta building down at Dayton every now and then.
Yes, they do provide professional development.
But I'm sure that we could also pay for training down there as well, right.
Okay. No further discussion, we're ready for a vote. Spano?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion is approved.
The caveat, yes for this year, how about that? It's a yes with a condition, is that, is that, is that up there? Yes with a, I'm joking.
I got it in there, it's just Spano's ass that we look into.
Yes with the condition, yes with the conditions.
All right, item R, uh, recommend motion to ratify the contract for fiscal year twenty twenty with Miami County Education Service Center.
I'll move, second.
Moved in second, Corinne and Teresa, any discussion? Hearing none, proceed to the vote. Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spano?
Yes.
Ventures?
Yes, that motion is approved.
Item S, recommend motion to ratify the contract for fiscal year twenty twenty with Montgomery County Education Service Center.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Moved in second, Adewel and Teresa, any discussion?
So we use two ESCs?
We do.
And, and I'm assuming we get different services from, from each one of those, right?
One school site from each.
One school.
That's one thing.
Yeah, but there's other things.
Oh, yeah, there's plenty of other things, but we have one school site from each program.
But what is the Miami County ESC not providing that then, besides the psychologists, that we have to then partner with Montgomery County ESC?
So the Montgomery County also handles our vision, autism, OTPT, um.
Speech pathology.
Enso speech, yes, that's the five services that they have, uh, the ESC, Miami County ESC handles our kindergarten, our behavior health, our preschool, I'm saying kindergarten, preschool program. Behavioral health, some additional OTPT that isn't done at the other park. They also cover a school psych, our truancy services, um, speech services, mental health services. EMA services were paid from the EMA, from the Miami County, now they're paying that back in-house.
Right, exactly.
So I mean, did the price go down for that service, or you don't know that?
It did go down for that service, it's been removed and is no longer, uh, expected to be charged, but then we did have, cost go up for our school site in, I think we.
We try to do as much as possible through Miami County ESC, but there's just some services that they have at Montgomery County and they're closely provide that for us. One of the aspects is that as a state, now the ESCs, they are, uh, in a sense, a, a little bit of specializing in different areas, so that there isn't quite as much overlap. And so, that's how that, even as school district will be pulling from more than one that's nearby.
Right, so I mean, I guess, you know, looking at the geographic situation, I mean, if we looked at Clark County or, or Green County for any of these additional services and continued to shop pricing for these services, I mean, I guess.
We do not.
Okay.
Should we?
I mean, we could.
Typically.
I mean, the Miami County ESC performs our preschool services in-house, we do, they do pay rent for the buildings, the rooms that they use here.
Just an offset.
And it offsets our costs.
I love the Miami County ESC.
I'd say probably the Montgomery County that we would look for those type of services more, although, once again, we can do a comparison. It, I mean, one, it's not really a threatening thing, just, we were gathering information, and, uh, so I just go.
Just we were gathering information and so I just go down comparison. We can do that. There is some relationship building, which is also helpful. That, you know, if something falls through or someone moves away and all of a sudden you need a service and we can't replace somebody, that then they will kind of pitch it and help us do that. And it's really important because many of these things are very much related to special education with compliance and you're staying on top of it, so.
And we're so blessed to have Miami County ESC because Dave Larson, I mean.
Does a great job.
He was fantastic.
And Shannon Cox is the new personnel at Miami, at the Montgomery County and worked with her for several years too. She's a great person as well.
Okay. There's no further discussion. We're ready for a vote. Heatherly?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Spann?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes. That motion's approved.
Item T, recommend motion to notify the Southwest Ohio Education Purchasing Council of withdraw for purposes of becoming partially self-insured.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Moved in second. Teresa and Corinne, any discussion?
Yes.
Thank you.
So basically, we make this motion and we do this. I mean, are we basically committing to the other?
I would say so.
I think so.
I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. I mean, they'll turn them back from this decision.
Having to move forward.
I did ask Bob. I said, how many districts will leave and then realized they made a mistake.
Oh, sorry.
It was history. He said he's never had anyone turn back after the first year.
Yeah, we went through this at work and it was the same thing, twenty-six percent increase and we get not, you know, happy that we won.
I'm looking forward to stability for financial budgeting, you know, as well as the.
Well, that's right. And when you think, as I was just thinking about the projection, you're gonna find your forecast. How much do you continue to put in there?
Because they'll pay so much.
You're having twenty-six percent jumps.
Yeah.
And you don't know if the next year's at twelve percent.
Yeah.
Or twenty-six percent or.
Right, and they're not gonna go from twenty-six percent to a two percent. They're gonna keep.
Right. So that, that's very hard to project and have the the planning part as accurate as you need it to be. But it's so.
I mean, there's no chance they're gonna come back to us with this great rate, so.
Oh, but now we don't trust them.
We want you.
I mean, it's like, there's like this whole trusting now.
Okay, I just check them.
You know what I mean?
For one reason or the, I don't think they're able to at this point. I think maybe down the road, if they make some adjustments, maybe.
You mean the EPC?
I don't think they'd be able to.
They're not willing to break up the costs. Right, we have no breakdowns, right.
Produce that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we have too many questions at this point.
Yeah, exactly.
Ready for a vote? Ready for a vote? Dunaway?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spann?
Yes.
Venters?
Yes. That motion's approved.
Thank you. Okay, item ten. This alliance, we have the first read of several new policies, not new policies, but some changes under ascension. Any discussion?
Uh, I'll just do a real quick highlight for you. Uh, the first one there, uh, that one is really going to be rescinding a piece that is covered in our master agreement. And so there's no reason to, we have both. And that one, we, we do, there is a need to have it in the master agreement. Uh, the second one, uh, is just really looking at a change of date, of number of days. And so we're standardizing by saying at one hundred and twenty days, such and such will occur. So, and then the third one is about the, uh, the class ranking. And, uh, that one is just looking back at the way they're counting hours.
I do have a question about, um, the salary schedules. And I, I'm not sure, cause I sat in this meeting and listened. Um, it says whether employed for, um, a school year or for twelve month, or for a twelve-month year, an employee must serve, um, it, before it said two-thirds of their working year. So if you're a teacher, that's a hundred and twenty days. If you're, uh, two fifty, two sixty, that's one hundred and sixty-six days. I, I guess I'm not sure why we need to change it from two-thirds to one-twenty.
Well, I'll, I'll start and then you can add that. I think part of it is that at one-twenty, whether you're, uh, a one-eighty-six or a, a two-twenty-six or two-fifty, STRS recognizes that it's one year. I think that's part of it.
Yeah, you have to work a hundred, a hundred and twenty days.
So, two-fifties pay into STRS?
SIRS. SIRS and STIRS both use one-twenty.
They all use one-twenty, okay.
That's a good question because when you're thinking about the two-thirds, it's gonna be different for the number of days you're doing.
Okay. Okay, no further discussion. We'll move on to item D. Uh, the next regular Board of Education meeting will take place on Monday, July twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen at the Board of Education Office, uh, beginning at six P M. There's also a tri- agency meeting that will be Monday, July twenty-ninth. Uh, that's at the city of TIP City, also beginning at six o'clock P M. And with that, uh, the next item is an executive session. So we would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for purposes authorized under Board of Education Policy zero one six six and O R C one twenty-one point two-two G one to consider the employment compensation and complaints, uh, against a public employee or official.
I'll move. Second?
Oh, moved in second. Uh, Corinne and Teresa, any vote? Dahl?
Yes.
Dunaway?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Spann?
Yes.
Venters?